It's 5:30. We'll call our meeting to order for Monday, May the 6th. Start with the roll call, please Carl.
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronane.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson. Bunsonus.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We entertain a motion to approve last week's minutes, please.
Both. Second.
Motion Olson and second by Remley. If there are no changes or corrections, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We have a couple of proclamations tonight. I presume there's nobody here for the small business proclamation. But as much admiration as we have for small business, we read this every year anyway, even if nobody's here. Whereas America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take risks, and work hard. Small businesses are the backbone of the economy. Small business owners and Main Street businesses have energy and passion for what they do. When we support them, jobs are created and local communities preserve their unique culture. Because this country's 30 million, small businesses create nearly two out of three net new jobs in the economy. We cannot resolve ourselves to create jobs and spur growth without understanding that the small businesses do that. Successive presidents of the United States have proclaimed National Small Business Week every year since 1963 to highlight the U.S. Small Business Administration programs. And obviously, we support that. And so, Small Business Week here in Aberdeen is May 5 through 11. We do have Angie here for this proclamation.
Mike, before you move on to the next one, I think it's appropriate, oh, sorry. I think it's appropriate for us, for us to recognize the fact that Aberdeen was named number eight in the nation. Number eight of 1,200 communities that were, that were surveyed in the nation as a great community to start a small business. So I think that's, that's, it's great that we're saying Small Business Week here, but it's also even better for us to have been recognized as one of the great places to start a small business.
Okay, good. Thanks. Angie, you want to come up, the two of you? Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing donations to local food banks. Whereas a letter carrier stamp out Hunger Food Drive is one example of how letter carriers make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, more than a billion pounds of food have been collected. And we want to recognize the letter carriers for their work and commitment of the communities. All of the food collected in this community stays in the community. And we support those efforts, so we declare May the 11th as Letter Carriers Food Drive Day this coming Saturday. And why don't you tell us what's going to happen?
On Saturday, our postal workers will go out and collect food that everyone leaves in those blue bags that will be dropped off, I think tomorrow, right?
Yep.
In your mailboxes across Aberdeen. They will collect those bags and bring them into the post office where we have a very great enthusiastic group of volunteers that help sort that out. We bring the food to the Salvation Army and to Journey Home and a couple other places in the area. This is about six months' worth of food for Journey Home and for the Salvation Army. So this is a really big day for them, a really important day. And we rely a lot on volunteers, so you're all welcome to come and volunteer with us. Mayor Leeson will be there. Clint Rux is usually there, and we have a few others. It's a fun time.
It's a fun time. Fun for the letter carriers, too.
Rain or shine.
Are there nearly 20,000 pounds?
Last year, we, it was the second highest we've had, and it was 19,860 pounds. So we're going to try to push for that 20,000 mark this year. Whether I got to go buy more food or not. But that, that's our goal, you know. I know people don't think of hunger in Aberdeen, but it's, it's around, you know. People hide it a little better here.
We always use this statistic. There are 10,000 households with two or more family members in Aberdeen with an annual income of less than $25,000. And they are just one adverse event away from needing help.
Exactly.
And this, this really helps, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Our open forum tonight, there you go. Ken, there's nobody signed up there for open forum, is there? Okay. So we'll move on to the consent calendar, routine city business items, A through E.
Moved.
Second.
Motion Bunsonus, second by Lunsman. Questions on any of them?
Are there any trucks, though, that you need to bring?
Any other questions? All in favor of approving the consent calendar, then say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, no. Motion carries. Under new business tonight, we have a proposed ordinance relating to the street department moving of vehicles lawfully parked on a street for city activity. Robin?
Yes, the reason we have this in front of you is to be able to continue doing practices that we have done in the past. In a lot of cases, vehicles that are parked lawfully are in the way for something that we need to take care of. Maybe street patching, seal coating, things like that. Somebody leaves town the day that we're going, we put up signs that says, "No parking this block", and we need to do seal coating. If that vehicle's in the way, we politely take, take the vehicle. We'll try to move it around the corner, get it out of our way so we can do our business. The concern, one of the concerns has been that maybe those vehicles are taken too far from those property owners, so they can't find them. So Ron has put a provision in here to make sure that we notify people, that we get ahold of the police, or we notify them directly so that those folks are notified where their vehicle has been moved. That it hasn't been stolen, or, or, you know, that thought comes up, I'm sure. Other than that, you know, it's, it's typically for a routine maintenance, but sometimes you think about this year in our snow removal process. Not all snow removal was done during an emergency. And this really addresses that non-emergency time, if we needed to widen streets. I think everybody recalls, we did a lot of stuff down in that northern area on the oneways. This would be one case where there might be somebody that's, that's left town at the wrong time, and, and they're going to impede us being able to take care of that. So this, this helps us move ahead with practices we've done. And our city attorney advises me that maybe we should have something on the books that allows us to do that practice, so.
Any comments, Ron, on, on the language you used here?
No, I'm comfortable with that language. I just wanted to point out, too, that the removal will be at no cost, finer penalty to that, to that vehicle owner. So this is something as an accommodation to the city to allow us to move forward. And we wanted to make sure that we had the legal framework in place in case any, anybody were to object to, to that practice.
Okay, we entertain a motion for possible first reading.
I have to approve.
Second.
Motion Slate Hanson, second by Remley. Questions, David?
Couple of questions, just follow up. There's no ticketing?
This is a non-emergency, there would be no ticketing of this vehicle.
Non-emergency is the issue. 400 feet, it seems like quite a distance from the original spot. It's more than just right around the corner, isn't it?
Well, a block is 300 feet. If you're gonna be, you know, if you're dragging it down the street and it's at the beginning of a block, you take it around the corner, it's going to be in that, at least 300-foot range. So I think that's the intent. If, we, we don't want it more than that, to be honest. I'd like to have it around the corner, so it's just out of the way of the operation at the time, so. And that's why, you know, most people can look, look around the corner and, and see it. They're, they're okay, but if it's more than that distance and it's the next block down, you know, then you start wondering.
So how often do we take a vehicle greater than 400 feet?
It's not often.
And what would be the circumstances in that?
I can't really think why we would do it more than that, other than if you were doing snow removal maybe around corners, or, or we were seal coating more than just that one spot. But our, our guys aren't going to want to do that. They know the practices that we have to have, and we would.
We estimate that that's roughly a block and a half. If they were parked at the far end of a block and we had to, had to tow them all the way around and about halfway down the next block, that's roughly that 400 feet.
Other questions? Jennifer?
I had, I just want to make a comment. I wanted to say thank you in regards to the, making sure that we quickly notify, notify the police department or, you know, somebody who, who someone could reach out to, because I was thinking about myself. And if I'm not home, maybe I'm over at a friend's house or something, and I walk out and my car's gone. Probably the first thing I'm going to do, I might look around a little bit. But first thing I'm probably going to do is pull up my phone and dial 911 and say my car was stolen. So, so making sure that we let people know where their car has been moved to. Because the phones are easy to grab now, out of your pocket. And so it's, it's not as difficult to go in the house and find the phone with a line on it and, and call. So I think people would be more apt to do that. Maybe I'm the only one, but that was. So I did want to say thanks, thanks about that. And I, in regard to what Dave was asking, Dave, one of the things I was thinking about, maybe the first thing that came into my mind when I read this was a water main break. You know, a water break, that's going to make a big mess and, and be water for a long distance. So you might move a car quite a ways in those situations, so that was.
Who, who will track this?
Well, the foreman will be the ones that are directly involved every time. So we'll have a discussion with the foreman to make sure that when they're out doing this stuff, that that's, these are the processes that they follow.
Okay.
And we'll have no problem. It's really following the practice we're already doing, for the most part, with the exception of that notification on occasion.
Okay. Anything else from anyone before we vote? If not, we have a motion and a second for first reading of the ordinance as you have in front of you. Carl, roll call, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye, motion carries. Just a little off the subject, Robin, we'll have you here. I got a call today from a woman concerned about getting a ticket with our new daytime street sweeping. Could you run through the, the implications of that switch one more time, please?
Well, what, what we're doing, and, you know, this, this year's experimental. We're, we're going to have to tweak things a little bit as we go. But we're not intending on, on ticketing this year at all, so.
That's what I told her. I'm glad. I had to check and make sure I was right.
We're, you know, we're hopeful that the daytime will remedy a lot of the parking issues that we've had in the past. And there have been a lot of folks getting tickets during the course of the nighttime sweeping, and this may ease that because most people are working, so.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
In that regard, Mike, I know, Robin knows that I posted this to my councilwoman page, and I got a lot of feedback from people about this change. From my perspective, I know at our house, we always had to, you know, play the car game and move cars around. So I, of course, I didn't move my car, but my husband moved his. And, and he was very happy about this change. I did hear one thing from a businessperson who does business throughout the community, and he was wondering about how businesspeople would be alerted to this change. Hopefully, the newspaper is covering it, covering it, and businesspeople will find out that way. But he was concerned that he might get ticketed as he's moving around the community.
And there again, no ticketing. So the, the bottom line is, we, we started this week normally. This would be the time where we do the courtesy tickets, anyway. So I think what we're going to do is we're going to ask Police Department, a few others, to do some Facebook posts, and there's a lot of followers on a lot of these different sources of media. We've got it on our, on our website as well, and, and I'm sure the word will travel fairly fast now, so.
The important thing probably is, that's for just this year, correct?
We're going to revisit a lot of stuff at the end of the year, yes.
Right. So there's a possibility this is, ticketing will come back next year, so don't get comfortable, right?
Still try to get your cars on the street.
Well, you know, and I think as people get used to it, if they want their street swept, they're going to.
I hear a lot of excitement that we're not ticketing, and I just want to make sure that, that excitement is tempered.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item B, a discussion regarding the City of Aberdeen's three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. And our city manager, city attorney, and city planner have been doing a lot of work on this. And it's a discussion item. The council is not being asked to make, to take any action in this tonight. But if there is any inclination among council members to give further direction to Brett and Ron as they work on this, this would be a good time for it. But let's start with Brett. Tell us what you want us to hear.
And before I get into this, I will be asking you to take some action tonight. South Dakota law permits municipality to exercise its zoning authority outside of its corporate limits for a distance of up to six miles. The City of Aberdeen passed a comprehensive zoning ordinance in 1968 which establishes its extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction for a distance of three miles in all directions. Currently, within the joint extraterritorial jurisdiction, say that fast three times, the city issues building permits, zoning permits, deals with planning, rezoning, vacations of right-of-way, variances, and special exceptions. The city also performs building inspections within one mile of the city limits. This has been the practice for decades. The county commission has recently expressed concern about perceived confusion brought by, brought about by the regulatory structure within the joint jurisdictional area. The county commission proposed several actions, one of which was a joint city-county zoning board. Staff is of the belief that the majority of the proposed actions by the county commission would create an additional layer of government, which would add to the perceived confusion. With that said, staff believes that the best way to relieve the confusion is to repeal the joint jurisdiction. In order to accomplish this, staff requests direction from the city council to present an amending ordinance to the planning commission for its review and recommendation. Now, maybe I can stave off a few questions with some statistics I have here. In 2018, the Planning and Zoning Department issued 1,345 building and zoning permits. Only 92 permits, or 6.8%, came from the three-mile area. The fees generated in 2018 for building permits in three-mile area totaled less than $12,175. That's only 2.3% of the $523,274 in total permit fees generated by the city for one year. The zoning board handled a total of 385 hearings and appeals. About that, 50 hearings and appeals, or 13% involved the three-mile area. One-third of those were fireworks sales, variances. The planning zoning staff spent approximately 10% of total staff time in 2018 working on three-mile issues. Of that 10%, 25% of the complaints and headaches came from that three-mile area.
Okay, before we proceed to any other discussion, I'd like to have Ron just give us a bit of a rundown as to the implications of this. What happens that is different if we do this?
The, interestingly enough, the unwinding of joint jurisdiction is not that difficult. To repeal the three-mile jurisdiction and return our ordinances back to simply governing within the, within the city limits is a, a process that can be accomplished very easily and very quickly. The, the, the governance at that point would be pulling back. And if there are issues, for example, I will use, I will use an access approach on a county road. If there is a, if there is a property within the city limits where that person is going to need to gain access, they will have to deal with the county on that issue. Other than that, though, those kinds of things that are, that are outside the city limits would now be county matters. Whether it's, again, the, the, in the, in the last decades, the city has handled all replats, rezone petitions, variance requests are going through the, through the zoning board. Now those are all going to be matters that the county itself will be able to address. Confusion was, was raised as an issue. Now, if you live outside of city limits, your first go-to will be the county. If you live within city limits, your first go-to will be the city. And it's very probable that that will be the only go-to you will have, except for those rare occasions where you'll need something from the county, probably by way of a variance. So the actual unwinding is, is relatively simple. And the actual line is much clearer now between what is a, what is a county matter and a city matter. So the recommendation for repealing the joint zoning jurisdiction, giving the county these matters and oversight of these matters within the county limits, within the county, should not be a difficult process. I will also add that because of the, the well-staffed planning and zoning department that we have, we will have the ability to monitor matters within the, within the one mile, certainly within the three-mile jurisdiction of the city, and, and be a presence if we feel that we need to be on behalf of a city issue. So if there's something coming up where city input would be, would be relevant and perhaps helpful to the county zoning board or the planning commission, the city has the ability to make that known.
Okay. And Brett, you are correct. You are asking for an actual motion tonight that was on the, the other page. So we will proceed to that. The motion requested is to direct the planning and zoning director with the assistance of the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction and to submit such ordinance to the planning and zoning commission for its review and recommendation as required by law.
So moved.
Motion Rux, second by Olson. Questions or comments? Mr. Lunsman?
Just to clarify, is that if somebody's outside the city limits, they're across the road, per se, and they want city water sewer, then they still have to come to the city to ask for annexation? Is that correct?
That is correct, in order to receive city services.
Okay.
Can I clarify that? And so, just so everyone is aware, when we talk about city limits, we're talking about all property that's annexed within the city. So if, if a property is annexed, then that obviously becomes subject to just our jurisdiction.
Right. And I was just asking if somebody wanted to have our services. They were in the county, but to ask for those things, they would have to come here to ask for being annexed in to get those services.
Provided they meet the other criteria for annexation that's contiguous to other annexed property, a community of interest. If, if they meet those criteria, then those can be voluntarily annexed without any issues.
Okay, thank you.
And it's our understanding here, and people have been here a long time, that the city has never annexed anybody that didn't request it. In our memory that we know of, it's always been a voluntary action, never been forced on anyone.
The last involuntary annexation, I think it was 1994.
84.
Okay, I wasn't even aware of that. Certainly not since I've been here, so.
Okay.
We do buildings inspections currently in the.
That's correct.
And so that will all pull back.
That will pull back as well.
Is there any consequence to that for lenders or any? I know, talked to Lynn the other day, and whether any, any projects that are, that are maybe dependent upon that?
We currently don't have any projects going on right now, within that one mile. You know, in the two and three mile, we don't do inspections. So it'd follow the same suit with lenders that they do in the two and three mile.
So we thought about, I understand we don't have any projects currently, but have we had projects that we can think of that might have been impacted because we've gone to no one-mile limit or?
You know, off the top of my head, I can't say that I know of any. You know, it, it kind of goes both ways. We have some individuals who are happy to have those inspections, then other individuals don't want the city intrusion. But as far as, you know, dealing with lenders, I haven't heard of where it's impacted either way.
And, and the state still does the plumbing and electrical inspections in the two and three-mile limit.
And the county requirements, as for the actual structure and activities itself, similar enough to ours that there's?
I guess I'd leave that up to if Scott Bader has an answer for that.
How about a certificate of occupancy? Is that required by lenders?
Nope, it is not. Well, it might be, but I, there again, in an area where there are no inspections done, I don't think they require that. It's only if there's an area where it's performed.
Comments here? Anyone else?
One other question is that, I know you said it was easy to unravel. What happens if we decide that there's a issue, or citizens decide that we should have the one-mile back or the three-mile back? How easy is it to go back the other way again?
We had, in, in the conversations surrounding this, we had talked about the ability to reassert a zoning authority, and that can be done. And I, and I need both the county and the city to understand that, that each has a, a co-equal ability to zone in that area. So it's not like one can keep the other out. And so if, if it were determined that for whatever reason, we felt that our interests were now needed to be reasserted in the, in the, in the joint jurisdiction, whatever that distance might be, we can simply make that known to the county and start the process to, to reassert that authority.
Jennifer?
So just to maybe re-assess or, or re-note some of the things that have been happening recently that have, that have led us to ask you to put together this information for us. This, we have always had a joint planning commission. I, I used to be on the planning commission. We always met jointly with the planning commission. But we haven't had a joint zoning commission. And so the zoning are the issues that the county has, has recently questioned. Is that, is that correct?
Those are some of the concerns, yes.
Some of the concerns that they, that they have requested, I guess they have requested that they have that back. And, and then in regards to, in regards to, I guess, conversations, at least myself, maybe someone else can, can weigh in on this as well. Conversations that I have had recently with folks who are on the county commission. This isn't, excuse me, this is actually coming kind of at their request. This is something that they have wanted. And for whatever reason, the conversations that I've had with them have kind of been the same thing. If you don't, you know, if you want to change your ordinance, change it. And so I am absolutely in support of this because of that information that I've been shared from county folks who do want their zoning back. They want their ability to do what they want to do within that three miles. So I, I think this is wonderful for us to be looking at this and, and giving them back that authority that they've requested.
I agree. This is in the interest of working together, and we trust them to do the right thing as they trust us inside the city, which is part of what the county commissioners have jurisdiction over, anyway, because we're all in the counties, so.
Have I missed something here? I thought they were asking for a joint group. Or are they ultimately asking for us to retreat back to the city limit boundary? I didn't, I didn't take it that way.
The, the letter that I got that was shared with all of you stated, you know, a joint comprehensive plan and, yeah.
Yeah, it was more joint than it was anything else, but.
The personal conversations that I had beyond that letter indicated that they.
Well, I haven't had those personal conversations.
You haven't talked to anyone at the county to find out what they think?
Well, it's not election year for me, so.
Oh, thanks, Dave. So in election year, you don't do your job.
Let's get back to the issue at hand.
Don't question whether I'm talking to someone. Well, in response to you.
At the, I was at a planning commission meeting where the county presented some information. I do believe there is some confusion. The joint, of course, zoning board doesn't work with our current system because we have our own separate zoning board that handled a lot of these issues. I, I think that's where the confusion, because at the county, the county commission is a final appeal, where we don't even deal with the zoning board issues. And I think that's part of the confusion. In, in talking to some of them there, I, I think this would relieve some headache for the county commissioners as well, as well as relieve some confusion for the people who live in those areas. And, and I saw the same five things, and a lot of it was, yeah, a lot of it was joint, but one of them was the county takeback, you know, jurisdiction of the two and three mile, or one mile, the city only has jurisdiction one mile, or gives up its authority. But like I say, I think that this is, is a good start to, to moving forward and hopefully easing some confusion with, because I deal with it all the time. People near the airport don't know, I mean, they have to deal with the city, but they're county residents, they can't vote in city elections. You know, this, this sort of clears all that up for them.
I think you're right, you're right, Clint. The, the suggestions made by the county were in effort to make things work more smoothly. And this is just one more step to make it work perhaps even more smoothly as, if we had to meet jointly. So I, I think it's the, the same goal, just a different way to reach it.
Yeah, I'm not questioning whether we should do it or not. I just want to make sure that we are thinking of everything. And that's probably an impossible task, but, you know, when you're, when you're in the midst, it's, to me, it's the example I would look to is when we have all kinds of water and we're dealing with airport water, and now it's crucial that we have an agreement that. that is, uh, gonna help us, uh, we, we're dealing with an agreement that was done when it was dry. And so, um, I just, hopefully we're, we're thinking of all the, and hopefully, you know, if anyone's reading the newspaper, they'll bring it to our attention.
So are we ready to vote on the motion to, uh, put our people to work? Mike?
Well, I'm certainly, uh, not happy with these misunderstandings that, that were out there. I hope the community knows how hard the City of Aberdeen and the planning and zoning department works for the betterment of all those residents within the three-mile area. Uh, the staff, and I can say this because I have personal knowledge, I've worked under Brett, um, is very diligent in protecting the interests and safety of those people, just like he does within the City of Aberdeen. And the entire staff in that department uh, submits reviews on every project, uh, whether it's in the city or the three-mile. And everything is reviewed. Uh, it was a service that we gave those folks, um, uh, in their best interests. And, uh, I was very disappointed to hear the comments that I heard. Um, and I just think Brett's department does an excellent job, uh, for all people concerned.
Okay. Other comments? Are we ready to vote? Uh, we have a motion and a second to direct the planning and zoning and the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction and submit such an ordinance to the planning and zoning commission. Roll call please, Carl.
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Ron, you wanted to comment?
I will inform the council that we can have the repeal ordinance together and we intend to, uh, publish it. We have to publish notice with the planning commission, but it will be on this, um, May planning commission, uh, meeting and we should be able to have something to you in June then for first reading of an ordinance.
And talk more about that process, what, what happens from now on.
Brett can maybe.
Well, once, once we get the ordinance, once we get the ordinance completed, then it has to be published so many days prior to the meeting, which we'll be able to meet that timeframe. The meeting is on the twenty-first of May, I wanna say, second Tuesday of the month. It'll go through both the joint city and county planning commission for their vote. And then it comes back to the city council to set a hearing date for that ordinance amendment.
So is that assuming there, it's a positive vote?
Well, the way, i- i- the thing is, that if the county say they vote in favor of it and the city votes against it or vice versa, it still comes before the city council with that split vote. And that'll be shown as they always are in the staff report if they vote separately.
What if they both vote negative?
It still moves forward to the city council with that, that vote. The, the planning commission is, is an advisory board to the city council, so the city council has the final say.
What date was that again?
Uh, the twenty-first of May.
That's a third, oh, sorry, I'm gonna remember. Okay, twenty-first. Thanks.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Carly Potrup to the downtown business improvement board. Need a motion to do that.
Moved.
Motion Bunsonus, second by Olson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those know. Motion carries. You all been provided with a list of bills to pay and I would entertain a motion to pay those.
Moved.
Second.
Motion Bunsonus, second by Ronane. Questions on any of them? Carl?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronane?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Bunsonus?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries. Lynn?
Thank you. Uh, Robin, could you flip to my computer? Uh, thank you very much. I would like to highlight a South Dakota municipal league article that came out of, in May of this year and the article was titled "State Municipal Sales Tax Losses Projected." And as you can see, I have the article before you. Uh, South Dakota was one of the few states that taxed internet access services and in two thousand sixteen, the US senate passed what they called the Customs Act. That act repealed the grandfathering clause South Dakota was operating under effective in July first of two thousand twenty. So that means that the state is expected to lose one, about eleven to fifteen million per year and the cities are projected to lose around seven to ten million per year. And then they have a chart below that shows the annual, uh, impact of this repeal and it shows for an annual impact, the City of Aberdeen from three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred and one thousand. And so when you do a half-year analysis, we're projected to lose between a hundred and seventy-five thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand for the year two thousand twenty. And that's kind of sad news, uh, after the start of the year. However, it was last year that, uh, you know, we were looking at the news that, uh, the Supreme Court would allow, uh, e-commerce sales for the state. And an early estimate for this new revenue source for the state was about thirty-three million. And for the city, it was between a hundred thousand to actually like three hundred and fifty thousand. But what most people then understand, uh, even today, the amount of revenue isn't exact for those e-commerce sales because it was implemented in a three-step process. And the first step was after the announcement that, uh, we basically had won the Supreme Court decision to allow e-commerce sales outside the state, some businesses started paying right away. Then there was a portion that didn't start paying and that was the remote sellers. They didn't need to file for a state sales tax until eleven-one-two thousand eighteen. And then the state law required marketplace sellers to have a sales tax license as of three-one-two thousand nineteen. And so Carl and I, what we're trying to tell you is, uh, we won't even have a half of a historical year for this new tax. And so between the loss on the internet access and then the gain on the e-commerce sales, it's gonna be pretty difficult to predict how this feathers out in the end. We're hoping that the, you know, the Supreme Court sales, e-commerce sales will be greater than that of the adjustment for the internet access credit. But, uh, we will not probably see significant gains for two thousand twenty. We just wanted to highlight that and tell you the difficulties involved with it.
Just, you need more variables in your budget process.
Yes.
So do we know what the difference between seven and ten million? What, what impacts that number? Seems like it's a pretty large difference.
I couldn't tell you that. Matter of fact, uh, I went in and I was looking at some of the state revenues to date and I noticed that they have, this was on their website. They have how much of the increase has been attributed to remote sellers, showing the comparison. But keep in mind, uh, that really didn't become effective until eleven-one-two thousand eighteen. And so they show, if you take what's been gained in December, January, February, March, and you kind of project that out, that looks like a twelve million dollar increase attributed to remote sellers. But then again, there's no estimated revenues for marketplace sellers. And so that goes back to the mere fact that the state has not recognized this revenue as a balancing point for their current budget, from my understanding, after I talked to our local legislators about that this morning. So like you said, there's a lot of variables involved right now.
We dig into Carl's unallocated balance to smooth things out till we find out for sure.
Who would we contact to, to find out what, uh, impacts the difference between seven and ten million?
I'd have to call probably the partner of revenue.
I think that'd be important to understand. It's a pretty significant amount.
Anything more? Lynn?
Uh, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we do have an executive session, uh, scheduled, uh, so we'll have to clear the room for that. But before we do, does anybody else have anything while the public is still here? Not, I'd entertain a motion to, uh, break for executive session.
Moved. Second.
Motion Ronane, second by Bunsonus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.